We'll call this meeting in order, please rise for the pledge allegiance and the invocation of the following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Miss Stravich?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Yarck?
Here.
Let's see everybody here tonight. We move on to approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting of January 18th. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Support.
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be in not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the city council, we simply ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If there's not, we'll move on. Okay. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
Council, any changes? Be in not, motion to accept the agenda as presented, be in order.
So moved.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Be in not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
What's been made and supported? There is no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to public hearing on the community development block grant. Mr. City Manager?
The city council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the utilization of this year's community development block grant allocation. As you know, the Macomb County has switched from once every three-year allocation back to an annual allocation. The city's amount of funding this year for fiscal year 2016 through 17 is $17,766, of which 25%, an amount of $4,442, can be used for public service projects. And this leaves for, leaves $13,324 for non-public service projects. Those can be either bricks and mortar or planning and administration. Our city planner Troy Juszczyk has been attending a lot of the CDBG meetings on our behalf down at the county, as well as Jim has gone, Jim Gutsinger has gone to some of them. And so before you, we have the list from the county of those groups that are eligible for within the city of Richmond for funds. Troy highlighted those on which public service groups are eligible within the city of Richmond, and then also the one planning and administrative one that was eligible. The city also has one program that we have funded in the past for our public service funds, and that is the senior coordinator position at the senior center in Beebe Park. And that would be an amount equal to our allocation for the public service side of the, of the funding, which would equal $4,442 if you chose to fund that. With that, I'll turn it over to the public hearing.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this? If you would just state your name and address, and then if you have a handout, we'll...
Cindy Paparelli, 37192 Brett Drive, New Baltimore. I have eight copies, I think there are seven. The New Baltimore Farmers Market has been in existence for eight years. We've had a program called the SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks Program, which is what allows people to bring their bridge card to the farmers market. We're the first program of that kind in Macomb County, been doing it since 2011. And this is the first year we're able to qualify for funding from communities to help support that program. What we're looking for mainly is for your community to provide us with the amount to do outreach, and that is for print materials that we would continue to stock within your city offices. We'd like to work with your senior coordinator and make sure that we visit those programs that might offer opportunities to reach those people in your community. We did keep track last year, we only reached eight people from your community last year. We would like to use the money to reach at least 30.
Is there any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
It will be an agenda item.
Hi, I'm Sherri Miller, 131 Market Street in Mount Clemens. I am here representing Care House tonight, and on behalf of Care House, I'm requesting $1,200 of CDBG funding. Care House is a children's advocacy center located in Mount Clemens. We opened up in 1996, and we coordinate and provide forensic interviews of children when law enforcement is involved in an investigation of child victims who have endured either sexual or physical abuse. The great thing about children coming to Care House for this interview is law enforcement is present, Children's Protective Services is present for that interview, the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney is present for that interview, foster care is present as well, in a different area while the child is meeting one-on-one with the interviewer. This way, with the children's advocacy center involvement and the coordination of the interview, the child only needs to speak about their abuse this one time. Everybody's there to hear what they need to hear, law enforcement to go forward with their investigation or to close their investigation, Children's Protective Services to find out and get clarification on how best to keep the child safe, or what measures to take in order to keep that child safe. Otherwise, a child would have had to several times perhaps been interviewed prior to children's advocacy centers being available for children. Law enforcement would have interviewed them separately, Children's Protective Services would have interviewed them separately, perhaps hospitals, and each time that child is reliving any abuse that may have taken place to them. Another great thing about Care Houses, we offer additional services. We offer crisis counseling to the family members right after that interview. We offer play therapy, trauma-focused therapy, child support groups and parent support groups, community education on child abuse prevention, which is so important to educate and empower the parents and the caregivers on how to keep their children safe. We typically see 500 interviews a year now we're up to conducting. We provide services to every family. In Macomb County, we get a referral for at no charge. Since our doors opened in 1996, we've conducted over 5,300 forensic interviews. Last year, we provided four forensic interviews to children who live in the city of Richmond, and already this year, we've provided one forensic interview, and family services, support services, community referrals to a family member, a child who lives in the city of Richmond. As I said before, we, we provide these services at no charge, and are happy to be able to do it. If I may share just a few statistics, one in four girls and one in six boys are sexually abused before the age of 18. One in five children are sexually solicited on the internet, and the overwhelming majority of sexually abused children know their abuser. And it's so important for that child to feel safe in a child-friendly environment to be able to talk one-on-one with the interviewer in a non-leading way, and, and not have a reaction to what they might be saying, instead of a team response to what is best for the child, and then to follow up with the family and offer services that way as well. I think that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Council, have any questions at this time?
No.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any discussion whatsoever at this time? It is an agenda item. Motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the use of the fiscal year 2016 to fiscal year 2017, CDBG funds at 7:11 PM. Support?
What's been made and supported, is there any discussion? Be in not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We now move on to items for consideration, which we have two this evening. The first one being consideration of community development block grant allocation. Mr. City Manager?
As we've discussed at the public hearing, the city is receiving approximately $17,766 in community development block grant. Of that amount, up to $4,442 may be used for public service projects, which leaves $13,324 for community projects, which are either bricks and mortar or planning and administration. The city in the past has always used, or I should say, in the recent past, has used our public service dollars to fund the senior coordinator position over at the senior center in Beebe Park. That goes to offset the cost of providing that position that helps with senior programming and the senior lunches coordinating that. So with that, that position, we're requesting $4,442 for that. Also, the three programs, two of which spoke tonight, are also eligible for that money. Any money given to those groups would then take away from the senior coordinator position. Jim, Troy and I did meet on the bricks and mortar grant that we received, which is $13,324. We have two projects that we think are best fit the needs for that money, one of them in our Beebe Park, connecting our handicap parking spots to, two of the play structures within the park, the swings and the tuckazanium, and then also to the hike bike path. The swings, as you may recall, we did receive a donation from the Lions Club this year for handicap-accessible swing to be added, and that was added to the swing set. So this will assist both people trying to access that swing, or parents that need assistance to get to those play structures to watch their children play on those. Also, we've identified, kind of as we did the last time, the ADA ramps that need to be upgraded. Jim put together, I think, four different locations that need to be upgraded. We're currently asking for the, a portion of the bricks and mortar to go to that sidewalk in the park that will increase our ADA accessibility, but then also one sector of, I think it's the Byer and Oak intersection.
So John, for clarification purposes, the monies for the senior activities coordinator, what are those called again?
Community, or public service.
Public service, I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Yep, sorry.
Okay, public service. So, the, the other three people that have requested funding from that would be under the public...
Public, yes.
Okay, very good. Okay. Everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion to allocate $4,442 of the fiscal year 1617 CDBG fund to the position of the city of Richmond Parks and Rec Department for the funding of the senior service coordinator position for one year.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion?
Yes, I would like to say something. And I thank you both for coming, and you guys both have incredibly worthy causes. Unfortunately, if we did not fund our Park and Rec's senior citizen coordinator, that position would cease to exist. So I appreciate you guys coming and asking funds, and I will gladly support, me personally will gladly support you guys and get it out to the community, because I think the community can also support you as individuals and contribute money and funds to that, and also help you guys with the awareness. And, I mean, awareness, for me making you guys aware, that's free, so, and I will gladly do that. So, but I thank you for coming out. But to me, it's very important to fund our senior position. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes. Go ahead. I said it, it's always tough, there's never enough money to do all the things we want to do to help everyone that exists, and in fact, obviously with the city being in deficit spending at this point, we obviously can't even cover all the things we want to do for, for the city residents. I said, these are both, in fact, there's other requests here too that aren't represented that were worthy causes. And I'll say as far as Care House, I am actually contributor to Care House, and I appreciate what Care House does, but that contribution's going to continue every year for myself. I appreciate, I didn't, I wasn't aware of the New Baltimore Farmers Market, and hopefully we can communicate that more also. So I mean, there was...
Really? Yeah.
Really, what we're doing? Are you aware as to, we have a service...
I think it's important that we get that, that out there. As I said, but we also need to take, part of the program, the CDBG, is taking care of our disabled, which is our next potential motion, and taking care of our seniors. And those are two areas that are very important, and particularly as we get into the disabled, that's an area that we've, we also need to address. But I want to thank everyone for coming in, and we'll go forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Any audience participation? Back to the table. John, what did we used to get when the county was giving us our yearly?
Roughly $30,000.
$30,000.
Before they re...
There's $13,000 that, of course, we did not get back, when they've changed their minds again and gone to a yearly allocation. I would suggest that you go back to the county and ask where our $13,000 is, because in the old days, we used to give to some of the people that came in, especially I think Care House was one of them, and then McRus was another one, and, you know, but it is sad, as it's already been stated, we used to have a say in where more of the CDBG money went, which was more of a local thing, which, again, as we see, it's taken away from us even at the county level now. So, I take it, gentlemen, is that, is that the fact the county has basically allocated that money to...
Other communities. Other communities. It's been allocated based solely on population. So the more population you have, the more money you'll get. In past years, the larger communities had less money given to them, and it subsidized the smaller communities. So this is a strictly percentage-based now. They don't have a minimum amount for each community, it's based on your population.
Okay. It's too bad that it's not based on need, rather than population. I could think of some very large communities not that far from us that don't need the money, and probably can't use it because they don't meet the criteria in some cases. Anyhow. Any other discussion? Be in not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, thank you. There is a second motion.
I'll make a motion to allocate $13,324 of the fiscal year 16 through 17 CDBG funding toward the products of ADA access in Beebe Park in the amount of $9,866.33, and one quadrant of the intersection of Oak Street and Byer Street for ADA ramp repairs in the amount of $3,771.25.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have something. I am very pleased to see that, something that I personally have been working on when I was on the rec board, was having a barrier-free ADA accessibility in the park. And so I'm so glad that it's, it's been hard to come together for this, but at least this money will specifically go to that, and especially with the swing that kids in wheelchairs can drive around the park more safely and access other toys that they're, they're, they may not be able to play on, but their siblings are there, so they're able to be present with them. So I, I support this motion, and, and hopefully you guys will too.
Any other discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Move on to item number two, consideration of resolution number 2016-1, the inter-local purchasing system commonly referred to as TIPS. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving resolution 2016-1, resolution approving the inter-local purchasing system, also known as TIPS. This was brought forward to us from Kurt Albert, who is one of the companies we purchase office supplies through. It's originally an inter-local agreement or purchasing, joint purchasing program that was developed in Texas, and then kind of used as the, the framework of that was used to then go nationwide. There are several Michigan communities that are local, Kurt Albert representative handles, such as Marysville, Fraser, Roseville, and Washington, that are, have signed on to it. It uses the Urban Cooperation Act of 1967 to, as the legal basis for it. And then you adopt a resolution, so approving the agreement and designating the city clerk to sign that on our behalf. And then the process for ordering the supplies, once the paperwork is done, is the same. You just order through Kurt Albert, but then as a member, you get the discounted rate of the TIPS rate. So I did provide Dawn Field, who does most of the ordering for City Hall, kind of put together a comparison of some of the, kind of common items that we order a lot of, such as cases of copy paper and clasp envelopes that you get your council packets in, and things like that. And you can kind of see the difference, the cost difference. So it's also not something that you're forced to use, but only need to use it when in the best interest of the entity. So it's not, it's just something that, it'll give us an advantage when the prices are better.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2016-1, a resolution entering into the inter-local purchasing system.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion?
I have a question. There is absolutely no cost involved in the application process.
No.
And we, and I know you said it, I just, just to clarify, if like Amazon, or Kmart, or somebody had a cheaper price, we could buy it from them.
Correct.
So it's more, this is a formality of, of a discount system?
You don't get the price unless you've signed on.
Okay.
But you're not forced to take that price, you can go, you're not forced to use them exclusively, you can use, use them whenever you want, but yes, you are correct, you don't have to use them. If we decide that, oh boy, this week Kmart's cheaper, we can go to Kmart and buy it from there.
Okay. And did Kurt Albert set up this system?
Uh, in the background, it was done originally down in Texas.
I know...
And I don't believe it was done by Kurt Albert, but they're kind of...
So is TIPS then its own entity?
Yes.
I guess I didn't quite understand that.
It's a cooperative purchasing group, yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any audience comments? One correction on the resolution. We got a typo there, John, I just saw it. The first whereas, the third line down starts with program.
Yep.
Go down almost all the way to the right, and I think it says "and in," and there's a double space there. I think that's supposed to be "in their opinion." It just looks like a typo. It says "in the opinion," and it should be "their."
Okay.
I believe that's what it's referring to.
Yeah, it should be, I'll, I'll double check. I know the copy of the resolution I got had some very clunky language, but I'll...
This is clunky.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't like it, but I copied what they gave me.
Yeah.
But I'll verify that, that it wasn't my mistake, it certainly could be my mistake as well.
Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Moving on to City Manager's comments, sir.
I did meet with RAGS, Mary Ellen Logan Shepherd, who was handling the sleigh ride this Sunday. Obviously, they had intended to be able to kind of use the sleigh on the snow, and unfortunately, there's no snow out there. They did have a discussion on using the sleigh, very much like they did when they did the sleigh unveiling or the sleigh dedication, and go around the block at Bailey Park. That day that they did that, they closed down just Park Street only in front of the RAGS. There's no homes currently being lived in in that section of the street, and so it doesn't really impact the residents. I did also meet with them, you know, cleaning up after the event, and they had already been making arrangements for that. So I just want to make everyone aware that the sleigh will be out that day, but not in the park on snow. Also, I did send out an email on kind of how the city handles lead and copper testing, so please take a look at that if you have any questions. Let me know, and we'll, we'll get you the answers. I know a lot of people have been getting some questions from residents and things, and so we've been diligent in our testing, and we also have our annual water quality report on our website. You just click on the "How Do I?" menu and go to "View Annual Water Quality Report." Pretty simple, so any resident can see everything we test for is on there. And then, as a reminder, I will be at the City Manager Conference on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, it's up and for here.
Very good. Glad to see you're going to that. Okay, moving on to council comments. Jamie?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Or me?
Good, good.
Good. Emily?
I would just like to say that I'm looking forward to this weekend, the winter fest here in town. We have a lot of local businesses that are putting a lot of great activities on for the, for the Richmond citizens and surrounding communities as well. So I'm looking forward to that.
John?
I have nothing.
Jeffrey?
Well, just as the City Manager brought up the lead issue, I mean, I think we see in Flint that the total failure from the bottom to the top, it would appear, to protect the residents. And I've been confident with what we've done here. In fact, one of the things that was missed in Flint is that the testing being from, as opposed to being at the facility, as it goes into the system, that really the lead problem is at the end user to determine that. And I'm aware of it potentially because I'm one of the test houses in the city, but I've always felt confident with what we're doing. And I did bring up to City Manager that we could move that report a little farther out front on our website, so it's a little easier to get to, to reassure our residents that everything is being stayed on top of, and I appreciate the memo that, that was delivered by our DPS director, that I think we're on top of it here, and that our residents aren't going to have the problem that Flint had.
One of the nice things about having our own water system. Dennis?
Hey. I haven't done this while, I just want to, you know, recognize the, the school programs that are doing well, the winter sporting events, and the basketball teams, to the cheerleaders, to the wrestling teams, they're, all seem to be doing quite well at the top of their, their game, if you want to say. So get out and support, and go watch, I know districts and that are be coming up for most of the programs, and they're doing very well in their leagues, and so they have a great chance to move on, so...
It's exciting.
Yeah, it's good for the community, I mean, the fall sports went really well, so looking forward to those events.
Very good. Michael?
Just, I did get a request from some of the, the RAGS, the City Manager mentioned RAGS, in the Richmond area Historical and Genealogical Society. We attended the, the annual dinner meeting, and then they were really impressed with the, as you being the keynote speaker, and the...
Thank you.
And the address that you gave, it was very moving, in fact, kind of showing the work that the city does, Artifa does, and works directly with RAGS, so as well, so I did want to mention, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
It was very, very well attended, and you did a great job.
Thank you, appreciate it. My turn. Yeah, a lot of us were able to make it that night, some of us couldn't, but as Michael said, the, the Historical Society had their annual dinner... the Historical Society had their annual dinner, and it was, it was, it was very nice to realize just how much the city has supported that organization over the years, and the wonderful job that they have done, and all the things that they continue to do. And, you know, not too many towns can boast what's going on there, what's going to be happening in the not-too-distant future with the neighborhood. So, yeah, it was, it was a good time, and it wasn't hard to talk about something in Richmond that is so good. It's pretty easy to say good things about good people and good events and good organizations in this town. So it was an enjoyable evening, although I had to rush out and watch my grand, or my, yeah, my oldest grandson, I was missing one of his basketball games. It was killing me, but that was all right. There was duty to be done, and we got to see the basketball game, and he did very well. So the whole team did very well. So it was a, it was a nice evening. We go to the calendar. As Emily mentioned, it is the Chamber of Commerce's Snow Fest, Winter Fest, many, many activities going on throughout the weekend, starting on Friday, going through a big day on Saturday with a lot of events throughout the day. And then Sunday, there's, as John mentioned earlier, there's should-be, could-be rides on the antique sleigh that the Historical Society has redone, and that's always a fun time over there, too. Doesn't look like the weather is working out too well for some of the events like that, but it's, we were warned this year that that, what is it, El Nino?
El Nino.
Huh?
El Nino.
El Nino, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. Which also brings me to the annual, or semi-annual snowmobile drag races that are supposed to be held on the 13th, a week from this Saturday. They have also been canceled. It couldn't snow enough right now to host those, let alone the ground is, does not have any frost in it to speak of. So, again, sadly, that event has also been canceled. Winter recess for the Richmond schools will start on the 11th of February, so again, watch out for our kids. They'll be out and about, hopefully. We have our next regularly scheduled council meeting, two weeks from tonight, on the 15th, right here at City Council Chambers. Cable Commission, I believe, will be meeting on the 9th at 7:00 here at City Hall. And is the Planning Commission meeting?
Yep.
They are meeting. Planning Commission will meet on the 11th here at City Hall at 7:00. There is a note here, well, from our own Parks and Recreation Department, the big chili cook-off. If you have any questions, hopefully the camera can see that, if you have any questions on what it takes to be involved in that, that's this Saturday, 727-3064. And they can give you all the information, or contact the Chamber of Commerce, they could also probably add to the information. Also, we have another note here that's been sent to us. It's not that far away, the high school project graduation that Richmond is hosted for the graduates, at graduation time. They are out seeking funds to have that safe night for all the seniors. Rhonda Perry is a contact, and I'm sure if you contact the Richmond Community Schools, they could also get to them if you would like to be part of that event financially. So I believe that's it.
I have one, the special meeting of the Recreation Board is Tuesday, the same night as the Cable Commission, at 7:00 PM.
On the 9th, right?
So one of those groups will be in the community room here.
Okay. That's right. Park and Rec, on the 9th. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? Be you not? We move on. There is no closed session. Is there any other business of the City Council this evening? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thanks for being with us.